This time I'll call and order the October 15, 2025, meeting of the Clearwater City Council. If you wish to address the council tonight, please complete a comment card. Comment cards are located by the clerk seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. Now we'll now move to item two on the agenda, our invocation. So please stand for the invocation to be given tonight by Pastor Mike Hesha from the Calvary Church here in Clearwater, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Thank you for this privilege to come and to lead the invocation on behalf of our Pastor Willie Rice and all of the Calvary family. So let's turn our attention and turn our hearts to the Lord as we begin here. Father, thank you so much for giving us such a beautiful place to live, Clearwater, Florida. How privileged are we to live in a place like this? How privileged are we to be in a room like this with all these beautiful people? And thank you, Lord, for a beautiful Savior that you sent us, because, Lord, we needed to be saved. We needed your help. And thank you, Lord, that at just the right time, you sent your Son to die on a cross for our sins. Then three days later, you raised him from the dead so that we could know his power and that we can know his authority that he gives to all who call upon his name. Thank you, Lord, for those of us in this room that's called upon his name for salvation. For those that haven't, Lord, we pray that they will. And now, Lord, for tonight, in this meeting, I pray that we will come before you, become, come before this body today, and that your name would be glorified in this meeting. That, Lord, let us make decisions, let this council, let this body make decisions that will glorify you. Father, let none of us in this room do anything stupid tonight, not make a stupid decision, not act in a foolish way. Let us do everything tonight to bring glory to you, because, Lord, you've been so glorious and faithful to us. So let us return tonight and bring you glory in this meeting. Because you are a God who deserves glory and honor and our love. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mike, for joining us. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we go further into tonight's meeting, I'll introduce our dais for tonight. And I got used to introducing her for a period of time when our city clerk was out. And I miss introducing our deputy city clerk, who's starting, who's always down there, a little bit below to the left. And so I'm going to start a new tradition tonight. We're going to start with her. So seated to my far left is our deputy city clerk, Nicole Sprague.
Thank you. Good evening.
To her right is city clerk Rosemary Cole.
Good evening.
To her right is our city attorney, David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right is city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
His right and my left is council member Mike Menino.
Good evening.
To my right is council member David Albretton.
Good evening.
To his right is our vice mayor, Lena Tixira.
Good evening.
To her right is city manager Jennifer Horu.
Good evening.
To her right is assistant city manager Dan Slaughter. And to his right is assistant city manager Al Battley. With that, we'll move to item 4.1 on the agenda, and it's Manufacturing Month. So we have with us tonight Beth Galick from the Bay Area Manufacturers Association. If you'd like to come forward, we'll read the Manufacturing Month proclamation. Whereas October is nationally recognized as Manufacturing Month and National Manufacturing Day, as observed on the first Friday of October, throughout the month, we commit to strengthening and supporting the manufacturers and hard-working manufacturing employees of today, as well as manufacturers of the future. And whereas the priorities of Manufacturing Month are to change the perception of careers in manufacturing to reflect its true status as the most advanced high-tech industry in the country, reestablish the U.S. as the global leader of manufacturing education, advocate for education and job training policies that strengthen the U.S. manufacturing workforce, and inspire the next generation of manufacturers. And whereas the city of Clearwater is fortunate to be home to many great manufacturing businesses, some of which are world leaders in their respective fields, along with the Bay Area Manufacturing Association and AM Skills, whose mission is transforming lives and strengthening communities through technical training and apprentices. And whereas by working with educational institutions, the Board of County Commissioners and local manufacturers have and continue to work together to connect with future generations, build the next generation of skilled manufacturing employees, take charge of public image of manufacturing, and ensure the ongoing prosperity of the whole industry. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 to be Manufacturing Month in Clearwater and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve in our city, county, state, and the nation. So I come from a family where both my grandfathers worked in manufacturing, the auto industry in central Indiana, for over forty years apiece. So I grew up understanding the importance of manufacturing to our community. So thank you for coming tonight, for receiving this proclamation, and reminding us of the importance of manufacturing. So would you like to say a few words tonight?
Thank you. I'm Beth Galick, the president of the Bay Area Manufacturers Association. We are celebrating our 65th anniversary as an association next year, and we serve Hillsborough, Pasco, and Peneles Counties, where we have 3,500 manufacturing companies, serving 68,000 employees. So we do thank you so much for this recognition. Our mission is to advance Tampa Bay manufacturers' productivity and growth through education, networking, innovation. And during the month of October, we help to bridge the gap between students and manufacturers by our manufacturing companies opening their doors to local students so they can see firsthand the jobs that are available in manufacturing. And I'm pleased to welcome one of our local manufacturers from Monin, Megan Myers, to say a few words.
Just want to thank you on behalf of Monin and the Bay Area Manufacturers for recognizing all the great career opportunities that we bring to the area and the state. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and receiving the proclamation.
Congratulations. Watch your step.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now we'll move to item 4.2 of the agenda. So I'd like to call up Adam Blackwell, who's the current president of the Clearwater Rotary Club. And we have other Rotary Club members here tonight from this great club to receive the Rotary Club of Clearwater Centennial Day proclamation. Whereas the Rotary Club of Clearwater was first established in 1925 as a beacon of service, compassion, and community in Clearwater, Florida, and over the past century has been dedicated to serving needs of countless residents. And whereas throughout its rich history, the Rotary Club of Clearwater has continually provided a place of fellowship and unity, welcoming members and visitors alike to find inspiration and guidance through service. Whereas the club has grown and evolved alongside the Clearwater community, building a legacy that includes Herb Brown, the Rotary International President, major contributions to End Polio Now, and the Rotary International Foundation, millions of dollars for community service projects and educational scholarships that uphold our values of service above self. And whereas, as the Rotary Club of Clearwater celebrates its centennial anniversary, through its members and endowment, it is looking forward to continued service and growth in the next century. And whereas on January 2nd, 2025, the Rotary Club of Clearwater will celebrate, will commemorate 100 years of service, celebrating its enduring commitment to the Clearwater community. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, and a member of Rotary, on behalf of this Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2nd, 2025, to be the Rotary Club of Clearwater Centennial Day in Clearwater. I don't guess any of the four of you were around 100 years ago when the club was founded, but what a great legacy you carry on through the work you're still doing. And so we appreciate all those that came before you and appreciate your service to our community and keeping this great tradition and club going. So, President, would you like to say something?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm joined here by Major Ted Morris, former president of the club, Angelica Vosquin, where did you go, John McGuire, right behind me. And you're right, it's an honor to be here. Obviously, I only joined the club four or five years ago, but there is a legacy here. Whether you think of the impact that Herb Brown had globally on raising millions of dollars to end polio, the work we do in the community, this week, this month is our, what we call Hope-tober. We're working with Hope Villages to try and raise funds, provide food, and help at their food bank. So Angelica joined me, and we spent a day, what, we fed about 130 families. So this is what Rotary is all about. And as you know, we work tirelessly to try and contribute to the community and have impact in our community. So we're very proud to be here, very grateful for this honor, and look forward to continuing the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Maybe take a picture with you.
Yes, yeah, if you come up here, we'll get a picture.
Thank you.
If you all would just turn around, we'll get our picture.
He does that a lot to me.
They're watching the picture.
Thank you for coming tonight. Now we'll move to item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 5.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Move to Agenda Item 6.1.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low RL and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential LMDR district for 2714 Woodring Drive and pass ordinances 9842-25, 9843-25, and 9844-25 on first reading.
Good evening. Lauren Matzke, Planning and Development. This request for voluntary annexation is for a .17 acre parcel occupied by a detached dwelling. The owner has requested annexation in order to receive city services, including sanitary sewer, solid waste, and recycling. The Development Review Committee reviewed the request and found that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the Community Development Code, and applicable state statutes, and is recommending approval.
So anyone here tonight from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.1? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion?
I think I'm supposed to speak. Is this the one on the annexation of this harbor business?
This is Item 6.1, which is 2714 Woodring Drive.
Oh, okay. He had 6.1 on here, so I don't think it was. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else from the public would like to speak to this agenda item? If not, is there any council discussion? And can we get a reading?
Mayor, we have three ordinances here. We have ordinance number 9842-25 first on first reading. It is an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the north side of Woodring Drive, approximately 50 feet west of Maryland Drive, whose post office address is 2714 Woodring Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, we have ordinance number 9843-25, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the north side of Woodring Drive, approximately 50 feet west of Maryland Drive, whose post office address is 2714 Woodring Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential low RL, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9844-25, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the north side of Woodring Drive, approximately 50 feet west of Maryland Drive, whose post office address is 2714 Woodring Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low-medium density residential LMDR, providing an effective date.
Now is there any further council discussion? Hearing, none, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.1?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 6.2.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and preservation and initial zoning atlas designations of low-medium density residential and preservation districts for 2743 Morningside Drive and pass ordinances 9845-25, 9846-25, and 9847-25 on first reading.
All right. Good afternoon. Good evening. Lauren Matzke again for Planning and Development. So this is a .2 acre parcel located at 2743 Morningside Drive, which is occupied by a detached dwelling. Similarly to the last one, the owner is requesting annexation in order to connect to city sewer and also receive solid waste and recycling services. Staff is recommending approval of the request, finding that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the Community Development Code, and applicable state statutes.
So anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.2? Hearing seeing none, maybe we have a reading?
Mayor, we have three ordinances. First up is ordinance number 9845-25, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the south side of Morningside Drive, approximately 360 feet east of Evans Drive, whose post office address is 2743 Morningside Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Ordinance number 9846-25 is an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the south side of Morningside Drive, approximately 360 feet east of Evans Drive, whose post office address is 2743 Morningside Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential low RL and preservation P, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9847-25, and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the south side of Morningside Drive, approximately 360 feet east of Evans Drive, whose post office address is 2743 Morningside Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low-medium density residential LMDR and preservation P, providing an effective date.
City council discussion on this agenda item? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.2?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 6.3.
Declare surplus for the purpose of donating to CIMHZ Management LLC certain real property located at 1164 LaSalle Street for the development of affordable housing. Approve the agreement for transfer of real property and authorize appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing.
Good evening. My name is Dylan May. I'm the acting housing manager. Tonight, I'm presenting the proposed disposition of the city-owned property located at 1164 LaSalle Street as part of our ongoing property inventory project. This parcel is .13 acres and was originally purchased by the city of Clearwater, I'm sorry, by the city from Clearwater Neighborhood Housing Services. Staff has identified it as surplus property with strong potential for affordable housing. The Peneles County Property Appraiser has assigned it a just market value of $67,806. In accordance with our disposition process, a public notice was published on June 14th, 2025, giving 30 days for responses. We received one response submitted by CIMHZ Management LLC. Their proposal is to construct a single-family home targeting households earning up to 120% of area median income. They have requested the donation of the property as subsidy. The developer has submitted his experience, which includes prior work in project management and development under another company, as well as the current activity under his company, one being a project up in Brooksville. This opportunity aligns with our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and their directive to engage newer developers in the affordable housing space. The Technical Review Committee carefully evaluated and scored the proposal, ultimately providing a positive recommendation. Based on that recommendation, staff supports the donation of the property to CIMHZ Management LLC. To ensure accountability, several restrictions will apply. Restrictive covenant will be recorded at closing, requiring the property to remain affordable for 15 years. The deed will also require vertical construction to begin within six months, and the home must be sold or leased within 12 months of signing of the deed. In summary, staff recommends approval of the donation of 1164 LaSalle Street, with these deed restrictions in place to support the development of affordable housing in our community. I do have the developer here, Mr. Rappaport, I'd be happy to address any questions.
So anyone here tonight from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.3? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda Item 6.4.
Authorize the purchase order to port consolidated ink for the procurement of oils and lubricants in a cumulative amount not exceed $600,000 through July 31st, 2028, pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warranted Section 2.563, Part N1, Part C, piggyback and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council. Brandy Colandrea, General Services. I'm here to request the purchase of $600,000 with port consolidated to help maintain the city's fleet, vehicles, and equipment for city operations. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
So anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.4? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.4?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 6.5.
Approve purchase orders to multiple vendors for the purchase of vehicle parts for heavy and light-duty city vehicles and equipment in a cumulative amount of $1.1,250,000 for term October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2026, pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warranted Section 2.563, Part N1, Part C, piggyback in Section 2.563, Part N1, Part A, single source, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Again, Brandy Colandrea, General Services Department. We are here requesting the ability to purchase up to $1.25 million with various vendors to support city operations with all vehicles and equipment. And I'm happy to address any questions or concerns you may have.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to this agenda item? While we ask for council discussion, I just want to, I did have a citizen point out to me the, to the, point out to me that from the public, you know, sometimes when we are approving these quickly, it doesn't look like we've dove in and we've really asked questions. We meet with staff every week, and we ask questions throughout the week on agenda items. And I'll also say, in your department, we have come to really trust the work that you're doing to make sure that citizens are protected in these procurement items. So. So just want the public to know that, you know, we ask a lot of questions on each of these agenda items. So with that, is there any council discussion on this agenda?
I've got something. Yeah, I just wanted to point out too, this isn't a question, but for majority of the public that doesn't understand, when there's certain items that are single sourced, there's reasons for that. So if you did look at the agenda attachments with like ten eight ring power, those types of things, to get those parts, you have to go directly through the manufacturer because Department of Defense has contracts with those manufacturers. So it limits, you can't get outside parts for things like those on those items. So just food for thought when you see certain things like that, that's the reason that they're there. And as the mayor said, we're, I promise you, we're doing our homework, making sure that we're taking care of your money. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, any other discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point five?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item six point six.
Authorize municipal, authorize purchase orders to Municipal Emergency Services of Pinellas Park, Florida, ten eight fire equipment of Bradenton, Florida and North American Fire Equipment Company, Inc. of Decatur, Alabama for the purchase of personal protective equipment, tools and equipment, communication system, self-contained breathing apparatus, parts and miscellaneous items in cumulative not to exceed amounts of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for term October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six pursuant to Section two point five six three, print one, print six, piggyback and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Chapin and Fire Chief, this request is for purchase of bunker gear, our protective gear that we wear in fires, also certain fire equipment, fire hoses, fire nozzle replacement, phone that we use for firefighting and firefighter uniforms. And in addition, there is funding for some enhancement sewer communication system. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item six point six? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point six?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Chief. With the agenda item six point seven.
Authorize purchase orders to multiple vendors for polyethylene pipe fitting and steel pipe fittings in the cumulative amount, annual not to exceed amounts of two million dollars for the initial term of October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six with two one year renewal options pursuant to invitation to bid number fifty two dash twenty five and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name's Jim Frye. I'm the Operations Division Manager for Clearwater Gas, C G S Energy. We are requesting authorization to purchase polyethylene pipe fittings and steel pipe fittings in amount of two million dollars. We've received three bids of consolidated pipe and supply and general utility pipe and supply represents the two lowest, most responsible bidders. The P E and steel items in this contract are mostly used for our new and repairs to our underground infrastructure. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone here from the public tonight desires to speak to agenda item six point seven? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point eight.
Approve purchase orders to multiple vendors for the acquisition of library books and materials in the cumulative not to exceed annual amount of four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the term October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warranters, Section two point five six three, print one, print C, piggyback and cooperative purchases and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Bonnie Potter's Technical Services and Acquisitions Library. Clearwater Public Library System is requesting authorization to purchase library books and materials using competitive piggyback and cooperative contracts for our two largest vendors. A piggyback contract with the Commonwealth of Virginia on behalf of Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance, an amount of a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars for in book library services. The Clearwater Public Library System is part of the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative. As part of the interlocal library agreement, we provide funding to cooperate to purchase shared databases and digital ebook services. We are requesting two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars for the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative purchases. This agenda item falls under the city's strategic plan of high performing government and community well-being, ensuring exceptional communities and neighborhoods where everybody can thrive. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, we'll find out if the public does first, but thank you. Does anyone here from the public tonight desires to speak to this agenda? If not, now, do we have any questions from the council or any comments?
I've got one. Yeah, when you put in that order, does the vendors, do they send automatic bulk shipments? How does that work? Is it just what's popular or how do we get those books?
Some of our vendors, we have standing orders for the most popular fiction authors.
Okay.
For the most part, we do individual selection.
You do individual selection? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point eight?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point nine.
Approve a purchase order to Bliss Products of Lithia Springs, Georgia for the purchase of various amenities for multiple park locations in the total amount of two hundred and four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty four cents pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warranters, Sections five, two point five six three, print one, print C, piggyback and two point five six three, print one, print D, impractical and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. The item before you is for purchase of concrete composite amenities. These amenities are being utilized to replace existing failing amenities throughout our park system. We've been on a several year process. The goal is to exchange everything in our parks for these amenities. They reduce our maintenance and extend the life of these amenities over time, as much as twenty years in some cases. Also, the materials used are made here in the USA, which is another benefit. This is for two hundred and four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty four cents, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item six point ten? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? There's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point nine?
Second.
Six point nine, excuse me, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item six point ten.
Approve a purchase order to American Mulch and Soil LLC of Spring Hill, Florida for mechanically blown in mulch services in the total annual not to exceed amount of one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for one year with three one year renewals pursuant to invitation to bid forty six dash twenty five and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. The item before you is for mechanically blown in landscape mulch. This mulch is utilized to help reduce weed growth in our landscape beds and also to improve aesthetics on our parks and public spaces. We put out an I T B, which is properly procured. We only had one respondent. This respondent, however, has had our contract in years past and has done a great job providing service and quality to it. We do select them again and actually the pricing that they gave us this time is the same as we've had in years past. So they held their pricing, which was also something we're glad to see. As said, a hundred and seventy five thousand a year for this year, we've got three additional renewals, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone want to hear from the public that desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Councilmember Albritton?
Well, I was a little confused about this and the next agenda item. It seemed to me to be the same. I thought maybe that one was for the service of blowing in the mulch and the other one for the mulch, but it seems to me, I've got the price table on this agenda item, it's forty two dollars a cubic yard for about forty four thousand yards of wood fiber and then the other one, and I think mulch is wood fiber, it's for the same thing, but why didn't you combine them both is what I was going to ask?
I'll be glad to answer that. So what we have, the second agenda item is for engineered wood fiber and that's used in playgrounds. So, and I'll explain further than that on that agenda item. This is for landscape mulch. You'll see there's five different options there on the landscape mulch for cocoa, pine bark. Those are what we use in our landscape maintenance operations, whereas that engineered wood fiber is for playgrounds. The reason we didn't combine them, we were hoping to get additional interest in this. If you'll see, there was three respondents to the engineered wood fiber versus only the one for the landscape. Not everybody blows the different types of mulch, so we felt strongly about separating them to try to increase the competitiveness of these two bids.
What exactly is engineered wood fiber that's not mulch?
It is mulch, but essentially it has a anziespec to it that allows for compression when a child falls. So you take the height of the playground and then there's a certain fall depth that has to be dug and placed with mulch. Now, we're using pour and place rubber in a lot of new playgrounds to get away from mulch, because that's always consistent, whereas this gets kicked out, blown away. So until we can swap those out, we're going to continue to use this engineered wood fiber, but it is actually a specific size. It's inspected and it's engineered to be able to compress when a child falls on it.
Got it. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point ten?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item six point eleven.
Approve a purchase order to American Mulch and Soil LLC of Spring Hill, Florida for mechanically blown engineered wood fiber services in the total annual not to exceed amount of one hundred thousand dollars for one year with three one year renewal options pursuant to invitation to bid forty seven dash twenty five and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director. This P O is for mechanically engineered wood fiber for our playgrounds. The first year is a hundred thousand. We have three additional renewals for this. We had three respondents and we selected the lowest responsible bidder. Looking back, we actually got this from that vendor a dollar cheaper than our previous awarded vendor that had the contract, so the prices actually went down, which is very rare, but was very happy to see it. So I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone want to hear from the public that desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now, is there a motion?
Before I make the motion, I'll just say thank you for splitting them, especially for explaining why you did that and trying to keep it competitive. You know, I can't ask for more, so I do appreciate you doing that, and I think that it worked to the benefit of the residents. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item six point one one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item six point one two.
Approve a purchase order of renewal agreement to Tritech Software Systems and Central Square Company for the renewal of Tritech Software Support and Maintenance in the amount of two hundred and forty six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents from October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six pursuant to the city code of order to Section two point five six three, print one, print D, impractical and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Eric Gandy, Chief of Police. So this is an annual renewal agreement for Tritech Software and maintenance for our CAD or computer aided dispatch system. We compute annually for a renewal of this agreement so they can maintain that platform. Interestingly enough, we've been working for several years now to implement a new system countywide through the Prime Consortium. That involves every fire department, every law enforcement agency, to include the sheriff's office and Pinellas County. It's a pretty ambitious project and we've had some delays. This will be another year where we've had a delay, so the Prime Consortium has agreed once again to reimburse us for the cost of the Tritech or existing legacy system. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone want to hear from the public that desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point twelve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item six point thirteen.
Approve a purchase order of renewal agreement to Lexus Nexus Risk Solutions, Florida, Inc. for the renewal of Accurant Virtual Crime Center and Track Software in the amount of fifty nine thousand five hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty seven cents for two year period beginning at the time of execution pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warranters, two point five six three, print one, print D, impractical and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Rose. This item is interesting. It's here before you, if you noted the amount, it's simply because it has an indemnification clause contained within the agreement itself. I'd like to explain a little bit about what this actually is. We use this system, it's our analytic system. Our analysts go through this and find crime data, draw relationships between a variety of crimes, and we also use the information gleaned from it for deployment of resources. We can see upticks almost real time to identify areas we need to move resources. Another interesting component of this has to do with our public facing crime dashboard. Any member of the public can go on our website, access this dashboard and put in the parameters they wish and determine what's going on in a neighborhood. I'll be glad to answer any questions about this renewal.
Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item six point thirteen? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point one three?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Agenda item six point fourteen.
Approve an agreement between C C O Practical Examinations, a certifying board for the practical examinations administered by the Crane School located in Plant City, Florida, and the City of Clearwater Public Utilities for the purpose of proctoring written and practical examinations for personnel who take the Crane Training Program from October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, Michael Boffa, Public Utilities Infrastructure Manager. I'm requesting your approval for the agreement with C C O Practical Examination for two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. This agreement is for proctoring the written practical examinations for personnel who takes the Crane Training Program from October first, two thousand twenty five to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty six and authorize the appropriate official to execute the same. The Public Utilities has agreement with the Crane Training School to provide Crane Training to our employees. C C O is a separate certification board and administers the written and practical examinations after training's been attained. Although this purchase is under the threshold, city council approval is required because C C O requires an indemnity agreement. I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point one four?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point fifteen.
Authorize acceptance of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Water Quality Improvement in the amount of three million three hundred and sixty six thousand five hundred and forty dollars by approving the agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Kailin Price, Utilities Engineering Manager with Public Utilities Department. I'm requesting your authorization to accept the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Water Quality Improvement Grant in the amount of three million three hundred and sixty six thousand five hundred and forty dollars. By approving the agreement with this department, you'll assist us with this cost reimbursement funding for Harbor Vista and Meadowbrook Septic to Sewer Expansion Project. With these funds, the city will expand sanitary sewer infrastructure to two residential areas that were identified as top priorities in our Septic to Sewer feasibility study that was done in twenty twenty four. The total project cost is estimated at around three million seven hundred and forty thousand six hundred dollars, which will be funded by the Public Utilities Department and will then submit for reimbursement with the state. This project is part of our effort to protect groundwater and natural resources while providing residents with more reliable and environmentally responsible wastewater services. This action aligns with the council's strategic plan to achieve high performing government and our strategic goal of environmental stewardship. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Is there anyone here tonight from the public that desires to speak to this agenda?
I'm Shirley Peterson, twenty three eighteen, Indigo Drive, Clearwater, Florida, three three seven six three. I'm here tonight on behalf of my son, Aaron Peterson. He was unable to attend due to a work conflict. He was unable to attend due to a work conflict. He owns two homes within the Harbor Vista subdivision and would like to abandon the septic system and connect to city sewer. They are both on Pineland Drive, and he wanted to make you aware that the project's scope does not include Pineland Drive. He would like to respectfully request you to have city staff review and reconsider the scope and include this additional road. Including this additional road would eliminate the enclave of septic systems, promote additional annexation, and eliminate the unincorporated enclave. It would further promote improvement to the Stevenson Creek Spring Branch impaired water body. It would isolate construction and community disruption to a one-time event without having to come back at a later time for a second project. This would allow for budget benefits from economies of scale and a one-time staging cost and also prevent utility piecemeal work. If the neighborhood gravity sewer system is not designed all at one time, it could cause the need for an additional lift station with a second project later. He hopes you will consider an expansion to this project and include this one additional road and bring the benefits discussed and allow for this entire urban neighborhood to have access to public utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here tonight desire to speak to this agenda? If hearing none, is there any council discussion? I have questions to.
Yeah, so, I mean, mine, I sent these questions in beforehand because I believe I received an email from your son, Ms. Patterson, from Aaron, and, you know, unfortunately with this grant, it was told to me that because of the timeline from FDEP, we're not able to alter it at this time. So, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know that I asked an abundance of questions, actually, but just to get to the nitty-gritty, with what this grant entails and the area that's already within the scope, it's not going to be able to be changed. So I wanted you to know that I tried to get some answers for it, but just due to the state's parameters, we're not going to be able to put in for an extension.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, just to kind of piggyback on that, Aaron did email all of us as well and had some questions. Does the properties that Mr. Peterson is speaking of, do they not fit into the two priority areas? Is that why they weren't included?
They were, it was a 2002 study that was renewed also in 2011, then we redid it in 2024. Pine Wood was not in that initial area. Part of the reason why is because the main road of Sylvan Abbey does actually, or Sylvan Drive, sorry, not Abbey, does both sides versus Pine Wood would only do one side, so it's about half the amount of residents. And there's also a lot of contour issues associated to the land there. It does have a lot of different issues, so it is going to probably be a lift station. We have not done the design yet or the survey because we're more focusing with FDEP and we can't start the project until the grant is approved and the agreement is signed by you guys.
Thank you for that. And there has been discussions about future possibilities, about future possibilities of them being converted over.
Ideally, we would love everybody from Clearwater to be a part of sanitary sewer, and so we are going to try to look into it, see if there's a potential future expansion. It would not be over with this grant, like Mr. Cotten said, but associated, we do want to look for it, and we want every Clearwater resident, if we can, get on sanitary sewer.
Very important. I appreciate it. I hope, I'm sure we are, I just hope that we are communicating effectively with those residents. I know he's not alone. There's a handful of them that see half their block and half their neighborhood being converted over, and I'm sure they're wondering as well. So communication is key, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, 27 neighborhoods were identified, and we're doing the top two, and they're all scored under our relatives, so we're starting and we're hoping to just go through every neighborhood eventually.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, any other council discussion? Then is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point one five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point one six.
Authorize a purchase order with HD Supply Facilities Maintenance LTD doing business as USA Blue Book of Atlanta, Georgia for the purchase of maintenance, repair, operating supplies, industrial supplies, and related products and services in the not-to- exceed amount of $300,000 for one year with two one-year renewal options pursuant to Clearwater Code of Orders Section 2.563 Pren One, Pren C, piggyback purchasing, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Michael Bock, Public Utilities Infrastructure Manager. I am requesting your authorization for purchase order with HD Supply Facility Maintenance, also known as USA Blue Book, for the purchase of maintenance, repair, and, excuse me, operating supplies in the amount not to exceed $300,000 for a one-term, two-year with one-year renewal options. USA Blue Book is a key supplier for our water and wastewater divisions. It provides essential equipment, laboratory testing materials, and process analysis that helps us maintain our regulatory requirements. We're able to secure this, again, by piggybacking on the cooperative purchasing contract led by Cobb County in Georgia. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Is anyone here from the public tonight desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Motion to approve six point one six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item six point one seven.
Award a purchase order to Keystone Excavators, Inc. for force main improvements projects in the amounts of $3,971,526.35 pursuant to invitation to bid 25-0025-UT and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. My name is Kailin Price, Utilities Engineering Manager, and we're requesting your approval to award a purchase order to Keystone Excavators for the Lift Station 9 and 10 Force Main Improvements Project in the amount of $3,971,526.35 on July 9, 2025. The Public Utilities Department issued an invitation to bid in Keystone, submitted their responsive and responsible bid. This work, which was identified in 2021 wastewater collection system master plan, is essential for maintaining our wastewater collection system. Following our review, both the city's engineer of record and the Public Utilities Department recommend awarding the contract to Keystone. The project is expected to be completed in 365 days. Funding is available on the sanitary sewer upgrades and improvements capital improvement funding, and this action supports the council's strategic plan to achieve high-performing government by maintaining public infrastructure. It also aligns with the city's strategic goals of community well-being and environmental stewardship. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Is anyone here from the public desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point one seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point one eight.
Approve a work order to Tetra Tech, Inc. for design permitting bidding and construction phase services associated with rehabilitating the effluents and sand filters at the city's Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility 25-008-UT in the amount of $306,509 pursuant to RFQ 34-23 Engineer of Record Consulting Services and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm requesting your approval of the work order with Tetra Tech in the amount of $306,509. This is for the design permitting bidding and construction phase services to rehab the sand filters at Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility. The sand filters are a critical component of our wastewater treatment process, providing the final stage of removal to ensure we meet state and federal water quality standards. A recent inspection identified several deficiencies impacting their performance, including media loss, damaged components, and corrosion. This project will address these issues by rehabbing the filter system, replacing the media, repairing damaged parts, and upgrading the control system. Tetra Tech was selected based on their qualified staff and their specific experience with Clearwater's facilities. The design is expected to be completed within 120 days. Funding is available with the Marshall Street Upgrades and Improvements Funding Code, and this action supports the council's strategic plan to achieve high-performing government by maintaining our public infrastructure. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Is anyone here from the public here tonight desire to speak to this agenda? If not, is there any council discussion? If none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point one eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point one nine.
Award a construction contract to Keystone Excavators, Inc. of Oldsmar, Florida for 2025 stormwater repairs in the annual amount of $1,522,824 for an initial one-year term with an option to renew for three additional one-year terms based on unit pricing pursuant to invitation to bid 24-0019-EN and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tara Kivett, Public Works. This four-year term construction contract allows Public Works to supplement in-house repair work in an efficient, timely, and cost-effective manner. Keystone Excavators is the lowest bidder. They were approximately 22% lower than the next bidder, and they've shown their expertise in past stormwater projects with the city. This contract will address concerns brought forward by the public and complete needed improvements to the city's stormwater infrastructure, including some of the hurricane repairs. Public Works is working closely with an engineering firm to help design some of the more complicated repairs needed that will then be handed to Keystone to complete under this contract. Some example projects that Keystone will address in the near term include some slope infrastructure protection at Oak Creek Drive North, some pipe replacement at 106 South Duncan, upgrade and expanding of stormwater infrastructure at Williams Drive, Whispering Pines, and Concord Court, and adding some underdrain at 439 Cleveland Street. Any questions?
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point one nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item six point two zero.
Approve a contract for the purchase of real property at 1838 Springtime Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, owned by Randall Wyndham, at the accepted appraised value of $385,000 plus closing expenditures not to exceed $10,000 totaling $395,000 and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other documents required to effect closing.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate. For your review and approval this evening is attached a purchase contract for the property at 1838 Springtime Ave. at the price of $395,000. While this purchase may appear challenging, it is ultimately the best option, given all the factors involved. A little bit of history, if I may. This project started nearly 10 years ago in collaboration with the county to address water-related issues from area growth. All initial attempts have not been successful. People just don't like change sometimes, and they didn't do it. So it's been 10 years since we've gotten this far. We're going to get it built. Currently, three bridges need upgrading, and this property is adjacent to the Springtime Avenue Bridge. Some of the issues that we faced first was construction costs. These continued delays have cost or raised the cost from 3.2 million to over 5.16 million. Everything has gone up tremendously. We expect future delay costs at over 206,000 to 619,000 annually. That's, that's hard to swallow. Pertaining to the easements, again, back to the current issues, easements of the nine affected properties, we have secured all but two. So this purchase will be number seven, and one more that Dan, Mr. Slaughter's working on, thank you, will be the final one, and this project can start. That's what this is all about. We've also considered legal action. Eminent domain was considered. My personal opinion, professional opinion, eminent domain, beginning of the end. It's a very hard road to travel, extremely expensive, very poor PR. It's just, it's the last, last-ditch effort, so we are not going to be going down that road. Excuse me. We've already done and completed the appraisals to have eminent domain completed. We have since approached all delay orders, and we have disposed to them. We are at the end. We cannot afford to continue any more delays. Please reconsider, and they have. We are now paying them for the temporary construction easement, where we have to affect staging for the materials, and for the permanent easement, which is where the bridge wing walls will cut into their property. It has all been, plans are 100%, so they are in agreement with that. I think they realize it's time. Okay, now to the property itself, very quickly. The owner listed the property for $395,000. He has since dropped it 10,000 to 385. The creek front of this property is roughly 210 feet in width, sizable access to the creek, tremendous area for storage, for storing, for staging, and the improvements that he has made to the property were not by permit, are not in compliance. Whatever he has done there will be removed. There's just no way around it. The bridge will improve it, the bridge wing wall. This purchase, again, is structured all around, is the right thing to do. For property regentrification, this property will be approved, hopefully, and will be resold in the near future by surplus. Again, thank you for your time. City staff has approved this. Any questions, please?
Is anyone here from the public tonight desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? Ms. Mermon Nino.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to disagree with you, sometimes eminent domain, when in the best interest of the public benefit, can be a good thing. I can understand in this aspect, probably not, so I won't argue with that point in this. My question is, it states that this, in this property, when we're finished, we're going to go through the process of evaluating it for sale? And are we also considering the 1843 adjacent property for sale with it?
This current property will be, once it's completed and all the improvements are done and it's maintained, it will be put out for surplus, yes. 1843 is another property, James McLaughlin, that I also purchased. That property is on two bridges. The amount of land that's going to be affected by that bridge will bring the wing wall within less than 10 feet of the corner of his house. The value of the structure there is very minimal. We have decided and discussed some ideas, what to do with that parcel. Right now, we just want to get this thing built. We are on our last extension from FEMA, not FEMA, but from SWIFTMUD, so we have to get this built.
I understand. I feel your frustrations. I feel it's been a long process.
It's been 10 years. I've been here three, and we're going to get it done.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point two oh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Agenda item six point two one.
Approve guaranteed maximum price two to ban disconstruction of Dunedin, Florida for the decommission of six underground trash vault locations in the amount of $144,755.80, increasing the purchase order from $20,776 to $165,533.80 pursuant to request for qualifications. 51-24 Construction Manager at Risk Services Consulting Contract and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Good evening, Curators, and Amy Soloway. So, Council Mayor Soloway's department is requesting assistance of Public Works for the demolition of the underground vaults throughout the city. The underground refu vaults has reached a condition where removal is necessary for both safety and operational need. Locations that we're asking currently for removal is Fire Station 46 due to Hurricane Helene damage, also the location on Point Set Avenue, which also was damaged due to Hurricane Helene, and then the four internal units at Coatsman Park. I could share a little history, back history. In 2023, when we discovered there were some issues with the underground vaults, they were taking in a lot of water, groundwater water, especially on the North Beach area. We reached out to the vendor. They came out, they sealed the vaults. We were still getting water encroachments at those locations. The internal park, Coatsman Park, during design, it was decided right before opening of the park because of some concerns of the, on the location of those vaults. It was not in the best interest to put those units in operation, and decision was made to hold off until a later date to address removing those units. So now we are trying to address that situation. Some of the operational need, we have the vehicle that is used to service those underground is proprietary. is proprietary, and we struggle, we're keeping that truck operated. And in event the truck is not available, we have a backup unit, which we use a grapple truck. But the grapple truck is not a sealed vessel, so in event that we need to go into the park, all that liche water now becomes in the park. So we decided it wasn't a good decision to run that truck in the park. So we decided to put that. I have a brief video, if you haven't seen some of the issues that we experienced with, I actually could show it to you, but we, it's a problem. We demoed the one at BK Ballpark recently because there were some foundations issues at that location, and it wasn't feasible to repair it, so we had to demo that unit. Some of the issues also we experienced were, they were not placed ideally for collecting trash, I would say, in my opinion, for example, BK Ballpark, as all thing comes into the park, usually there's very little trash they bring into it with them. When they leave the park, there's very little trash that they bring out of the park, but the unit was set in a location, there was very little traffic, and very little, we were collecting very little trash out of it. So it was really feasible to service them on a regular basis. So anyway, I could tell you a lot more, but I will stop there unless you have any more questions.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 6.21? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Councilmember Auburn.
Well, I feel terrible about this because it sounded like such a great idea to put these in, because you didn't have to go and empty the trash can. There was, I don't know how big it was, under the ground, a huge vault that...
Ninety feet.
Yeah, there you go. But every single one of them, I mean, over the years, we've had, especially on the beach with the water table being so high.
Yes, sir.
I think we got sold a bill of goods that, I mean, does the city, have they taken any action against the company that we bought these from?
Can you speak to that? I don't think we've taken action. We have reached out to the vendor on multiple occasions, supporting us, and we get very little support from that company. Miss Foye could speak to us, some of his actions. Not only us, others, the other cities that have that, those units, they're experiencing some of the same issues that we're experiencing.
We did reach out to them about like warranty work and things like that, but we were outside the warranty window. We let them know that, you know, they had never really functioned the way it was, they were intended to, and showed them the video of how much water intrusion and what that was doing to them. And that's why we were able to get them to come out to reseal them. And it was a significant expense to them, and to, you know, our staff had a lot to do with that in proving that these were not functioning appropriately. But it was outside the warranty timeframe, so, you know, and now they're unresponsive.
So did legal review it?
We have. I mean, I agree with that assessment. You know, there are times when we get hosed by a vendor where it's beneficial and appropriate to, for legal to do a lot more. In other words, in case, some cases, for us, even sue. I mean, we're doing that with Coachman Park right now. But that really has to be evaluated case by case, and as the manager said, the dilemma here is that we are outside the warranty period. Wasn't a great warranty to begin with, and then we're outside that warranty period. There's just not a lot of remedies beyond us using leverage that we have to get them to do some work. And as the manager said, we were successful in getting them to do some work that candidly, if they had really pushed us hard on that, I don't know that we would have had a lot of great remedies even at that point. I don't know that I would have been able to come back to the council and said, you know what, screw these guys, let's go ahead and sue them, and we're going to be successful, and then I'm going to get your money back, and that this is going to be a good return on investment for taxpayers. I don't know that I would have been able to say that here, and so I'm, I hate to say I'm pleased with this outcome, because I know none of us are, but I do feel like, you know, as a city, we've done the best we can within the framework that we're having to operate under.
Okay. Any other council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.21.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 6.22.
Approve the mayor's appointment of Sam Wilson to the Clearwater Housing Authority Board for a term ending October 15, 2029. Councilmembers, Ms. Icy Gully was appointed to this board, and during that time, you may remember there was an issue with, there was a consideration to require a detailed financial disclosure, and because of that, she had resigned, and we finally have an applicant willing to serve in this capacity, and the mayor has selected Mr. Sam Wilson.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 6.22? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Ms. Menino?
I believe we had more than one applicant, and that's always reassuring to hear. I believe Melanie Humphrey was the other applicant, and I think it's noteworthy to say that she was qualified. She's a vice president of a financial institution. Very impressive list of community activities from being vice chair of one board to partnering with two other entities, including Pinellas County Housing Authority, as well as the Contemporary Housing Alternatives for Florida. She's also volunteers in four other organizations. So I thought it was, she deserved some acknowledgement. However, I do understand your train of thought. It is always encouraging and very impressive to see such young, new, you know, fresh faces taking an interest in clearwater civic matters, especially when that happens, when seats open.
Thank you. And I did consider all of them. I looked at all the applications. I think Sam brings a perspective from federal government perspective that I think will be helpful to them. So that was part of the reason that I'd like to say. But I agree with you. She brings a lot to it. And hopefully, there'll be other opportunities for her to sort of go on forward.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick process question. Normally, we see the list of everyone that's applied. Is this a different type of board?
This is a different board, so in this case, any of the applications that I receive is provided to the mayor, and the mayor, it's his appointment, but with the confirmation of council.
Got you. Thank you.
I was just going to follow up on what you said, Mayor. I think that Sam's expertise with the federal government and his contacts there will definitely be beneficial, especially with dealing with housing in the county, and being able to take the information that he's gaining there and utilize it to our benefit. So thank you for that.
Okay, any further discussion? Now is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.22.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Agenda item 6.23.
Appoint an individual to the Environmental Advisory Board for a term expiration September 30, 2029. Councilmembers, Mr. Jared Leon, who has been serving on the board for quite some time, has completed his two terms, and we have applicants on file who are willing to serve. Madison Zerapak and Timothy Hughes. Madison is a restaurant manager, and she lives in 3363, and Mr. Timothy Hughes is a retired environmental specialist from 33765.
Well, let's go ahead and take a couple comments first. So is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 6.23? Hearing seeing none, council discussion on these proposed, this proposed appointment? Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, thank you, sir. So after reviewing both the applications, I believe that Timothy Hughes is going to be the best choice at this time with his years of experience with stormwater management, watershed protection, excuse me, and environmental compliance. You know, I think these unique strengths would benefit this board, especially for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Ms. Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. I too agree. I did, Madison obviously is extremely educated in the environmental field as well. It's nice to see two qualified candidates have interest in serving the city of Clearwater and on this advisory board. But having 30 years' experience in the environmental field and 20 years in Public Works Department, you know, for me, that's an asset to an advisory board that's important to us. So I agree as well.
I agree. When I look at Madison's application, I was impressed with her internship at USF for environmental health, her Bachelor of Science in Public Health specializing in environmental health. But I do have to put more weight on the vast experience of Timothy.
All right. Any further?
Yeah, and I agree. I thank them both for having their names put in. They're both qualified, but I am leaning more toward Tim Hughes.
So with that, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Timothy Hughes to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Mr. Hughes will be appointed Environmental Advisor. That will move to agenda item 6.24.
Mayor, 6.24 and 6.25 are my items from the city attorney's office. These are two Clearwater vehicle accident cases that we are defending. As the council is aware, Senior Assistant City Attorney Michael Fueino has been an outstanding contributor to our organization, and unfortunately, so outstanding that he is an attractive candidate for a city attorney elsewhere. And so he has, as the council knows, accepted the appointment of city attorney for the city of Northport. So Mr. Fueino and I have been working together over the past couple weeks to ensure an orderly transition for his cases. He has a very active and robust litigation caseload, as most litigating attorneys do in the government sector. So we do have two vehicle accident cases. The law firm that we're partnering with here is Abby Adams. I have not worked with them before. However, they do represent the sheriff in all of his vehicle accident cases, and they do have an excellent reputation. So I'm actually very excited to see what they can do for us, and we'll give them a try. So each of these are set on a not-to-exceed. They've given us a discounted hourly rate, which I appreciate as they offer the sheriff as well, and happy to answer our questions. But they are active litigation, so I'm not getting into the more specifics for obvious reasons.
Is there anyone here tonight that desires, from the public, that desires to speak to agenda item 6.24 or 6.25? Hearing none, is there any council discussion on these two items?
I just want to make a statement about Michael Fueino, that I appreciated everything he did for the city. He was very accommodating to a lot of items that were on the code enforcement board that seemed, he really came up with some great ideas to solve that issue, and I wish him well.
Well, I guess I'll follow suit there. This is our opportunity to give him a parting shot on his way out the door. I wasn't sure when that opportunity would be. I had the privilege of serving as the chairman of the municipal advisory code board with our deputy clerk over there, and when Michael first came to the team in Clearwater, and he came in hot under the collar, and he was ready to make change and make things happen, and he did a great job, was very professional, his experience helped our city out a lot. I wish him nothing but the best going forward. I know it's going to affect your team, and that'll be tough shoes to fill, but I have all the confidence in the world that you and your team will fill those shoes, and we'll be right back to where we were moving forward.
Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Agenda item 6.25, we heard that. The one here from the public wanted to comment on 6.25, so if there's no further council discussion on that item either, is there a motion for 6.25?
Move to approve agenda item 6.25.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Agenda item 6.26.
Mayor, this is a follow-up from the September 29 meeting. As the council is aware, Nugent presented their findings in report to the council and to the public in regard to the evaluation on the feasibility study of the electric assets. So to briefly recap what has happened, and I see that our friends from Duke have joined us this evening, so it's a good opportunity to discuss in public so they can hear it, and everyone can hear kind of where we're at and what the next steps are. So according to Nugent, the acquisition cost is estimated at $572 million. That is what they have indicated in their report. Of the $572 million, now that includes the hard acquisition costs of the distribution assets, it also includes all of the startup costs associated, the transactional costs, the soft costs, all the things that people say, did you think about this? The answer is typically yes. So all of that is included in a 572 number, according to Nugent. Of the $572 million estimate that they have provided, 371 million of the 572 is the hard asset acquisition. In other words, 371 are hard assets, things like holes, wires, transformers, and the rest of it are things that are not the hard assets. Most of the rest of this, meaning the difference between 371 and 572, is probably really, really, really close to the final number. In other words, the margin of uncertainty is going to be very tight there for a couple different reasons. But the hard acquisition cost, being numbered, being estimated at 371, does have significant range of uncertainty. That is how all capital projects work. When you start off with a capital project, you are estimating at a high level what it's going to cost, and as Duke has been quick to point out, that range of uncertainty could be as 50% less than the 371 million, could be 100% more than the 371 million, and Nugent themselves acknowledged that in their report. So I think we all need to agree and recognize that it's a feasibility-level study. The question then is, what do you do with that information on a feasibility level? Because it's really not, at least in my opinion, sufficiently detailed for us to approach Duke with any intelligent offer to make. It would not be using Duke's time wisely. We wouldn't be using city staff's time wisely, because there is a significant range of uncertainty within the hard asset acquisition. So if council is interested, which the last meeting seems like there is, the next step would be to do a formal system appraisal of the hard assets. Again, the $572 million number is the total number that Nugent has said, but of that number, the hard asset acquisition of 371 is subject to feasibility level only. And so the only way you're going to narrow down that number, if you're so inclined, is going to be to do a formal system appraisal of that number. And then depending on what the results are of that number, you can make a decision, you know, from there. Maybe less than that, maybe more than that. We already know what Duke's numbers are, because remember, they shared it with us from Concentric. So that information was already been published, so we have an idea of where they're coming from in that regard. So that's how we got here. That will allow us to get on the same page as far as the valuation with Duke, and depending on the results of that appraisal, if the council moves forward with it, you'll be in a position either to make a purchase offer or to negotiate intelligently, depending on, again, what the results are of that. As far as this scope of service with Nugent, so what is before you is an amendment to the existing agreement, something that we talked about a little bit on a staff level, manager and finance director and I talked about, to figure out what is the best way to present it to the council in a way that's in plain English, transparent, et cetera. And I think what we came up with here makes a lot of sense. So the actual agenda item is an amendment to Nugent's existing scope of service. It is an amendment of $100,000. The actual cost of the appraisal would be more than that. However, we have some credit that is left over because the council originally approved a not-to-exceed contract with Nugent for $504,000. The feasibility study is under budget, and because we are under budget on the feasibility study, we actually have credit that can apply toward the appraisal if we so choose. So the way this agenda item is phrased is to revise the existing contract from a not-to-exceed of 504 to a not-to-exceed of 604. I want to emphasize that this is not $604,000 of new money. It is simply revising the existing 504 to an existing not-to-exceed of 604. So that is the item you have in front of you. The source of funds, also a topic that we discussed internally with the manager and with the finance director, is the same source of funds we used for the feasibility study. Specifically, that means that these are unencumbered special program revenues. These are things like interest that we get from, you know, our checking account, things like fines and forfeitures. forfeitures. I do want to emphasize that none of this appropriation has any impact either on the budget, or on millage, or on utility rates, or any of those things, because I know that question comes up. So, that is the source of funds. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone here tonight from the public who desires to speak to agenda item 6.26? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? Councilmember [inaudible].
Okay. Well, I've got, I've got questions. So, I understand that this, this new, this $100,000 we're adding to the contract is for an appraisal, and it's broken up into a, to actually three categories. The estimated value under income approach, under market approach, and then the fair market value. So, are they gonna give us like a breakdown of that, of each one of those, to say this is what it's gonna be, this is what we think it's gonna be, and then this is the fair market value, I guess less depreciation?
Yes, that is correct. And so, because they don't know, and I don't know either, you know, where this is gonna go, they are going to provide us with different numbers there, because like any negotiation, right? If this comes back with a number that council finds attractive or appealing, at some point, regardless of what this number is, we're gonna have to sit down with Duke. Whether it's a high number, a low number, whether we're talking about a franchise agreement, at some point, we need to sit down at the table with them. And we may not want to do that until we have all the information. But once we have that information, there's going to come a time when we want to be well armed and well informed as to what the data actually shows and what those numbers are. So, to answer Councilmember Auburn's question, yes, what Nugent is proposing is to have different numbers that they will give us, so that way, it can be approached in different ways. It's also just good for transparency, because, you know, one problem with real estate appraisal, and I think we already see that, right, is that there can be significant differences in valuation, because it depends on what methodology appraisers use. I would fully expect Duke to do their own, and they're gonna say it's worth $7 zillion, right? That's what I would expect. So, having different data points at our disposal, I think will be helpful, because we also don't know what methodology Duke might want to use. We know that they have kind of suggested that a market value approach is how they would like to approach this, but again, we don't really have, you know, what they have, what they have is an estimate from Concentric, but they haven't done, or at least have not shared with us, a formal system appraisal themselves. So, to answer your question, sorry, it's a long answer, but the answer is yes, they're doing it in different ways, because we don't really know where the negotiation's gonna go, we don't know where the conversation's gonna go, and it's just transparent for everybody, and that way, Duke will have access to it, the public will have access to it, and people can reach their own conclusions as to what's reasonable and what makes sense, so.
Well, I don't think that they're going to really care about any figures that we're giving them, because they've already said it's not for sale, and that we're gonna have to take it by eminent domain, it's gonna be through the courts. And, you know, even this contract here says that the additional budget may be required to continue to support the city through final determination of like interrogatories, litigation, depositions, and trial. So, I imagine it's gonna be, I'd like to know from Nugent, what they think, how long the court process will be through eminent domain, once we get all our figures, how long that will take?
That is not within their purview. They don't do any kind of work in that regard. You know, their expertise is on the engineering side and the financial modeling side, they're not lawyers. You know, I would certainly say that's much more in my purview and those of our outside council. I would, I would say, you know, to, I guess to Kaz's point earlier, eminent domain is typically not, you know, the first thing that we would, you know, rush into as a city. I certainly don't rush into that, I don't think most of us do. I know that Duke has said their stuff is not for sale, but, you know, respectfully to Melissa, Florida Power said the same thing, and then they were sold. Progress Energy also said the same thing, and then they were sold. And Duke has said the same thing, and they just sold a 20% equity stake in their entire company. So, I've heard that many, many times, nothing in life is for sale until it is. On our side of it, we don't even know if we would be interested in making a purchase offer, because you would have to do the appraisal first in order to intelligently assess whether it even makes sense to do a purchase offer. The answer, maybe no. And if the answer is no, then we may not even go down that path at all.
Right.
But if the answer is yes, if the appraisal comes back, and let's say the numbers look good, and let's say council looks at it, and you say, you know, this is attractive, we think this is reasonable, let's make a purchase offer, we don't really know where it's gonna go. Again, I understand, you know, I mean, Duke's saying what I would say too, in their position. Their immediate reaction is, "Not for sale, not for sale, not for sale." But I've heard that a lot of times in my career, and then people work out deals. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that we are going to be going that, going down that path, but I know for sure that Nugent does, you know, they're not lawyers, so they don't specialize in that part of the process.
Well, I am for going forward with this, but I do have concerns, as I'm sure we all do, about, there's nothing written in stone that, you know, there is risk. But I see it's a not-to-exceed contract amount on the front end, it's just, we don't know on the back end what that's gonna be, if we have to go to court.
That is correct. I, you know, I agree with that. That's why it's really important to take this in stages, and so you can only take one step at a time, so I agree with that point. Nobody should overcommit for something as complex as this. So, to Councilmember Auburn's point, this contract is only for the appraisal. Once the appraisal comes back, there will be, as Nugent says, a lot of off-ramps along the way. So, if council approves this item, which is completely within council's prerogative, then the next off-ramp will be when the appraisal comes back. And so, the only funding that you're committing to is the $100,000 for the appraisal. If the appraisal comes back, and you don't like what you see from the appraisal, or you've just decided for other reasons that you don't want to make a purchase offer, then you can certainly give the direction at that time to the manager and myself, and then we'll figure out what we need to do to sit down with Duke as far as our priorities on a franchise. But definitely agree, yeah, there's no, there's no recommendation on my part to bite off more than you can chew or overcommit. It's why I take it in baby steps, and see at each baby step, do you like where you're at, or do you want to go in a different path? I mean, that's, that's the plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. Is he done? David, you're done?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you for, City Attorney, for the depth and description of the process. We committed to a feasibility study, and that's where we are, and we committed to that because we were trying to find clarity throughout the process on what this looks like. And I think you said it best, these little steps, and then we reevaluate, and there's off-road, off-ramps built into this process. Today, we all have uncertainty, and we should, because there's a lot of unanswered questions that we all have, and that's built into this process as we move forward. Today, we're just making that decision on $100,000, added to an existing contract, to move forward, to take a feasibility-level study into a formal appraisal, to give us that clarity, a more clear picture of where we're at and what's associated with it. Once that comes back, we reevaluate. And again, that's the, the depth of commitments we've made as a city and as a council. I think we're on the right path. We want to have all the answers that we can have, to make the best decision for the taxpayers of Clearwater, and for the city of Clearwater, not just for today and tomorrow, but for the next 50, 100 years, because we do treat this with a great deal of respect, because it is an enormous decision for a long time. So, I'm 100% in support of this process, and taking those baby steps, as you said, and reevaluating as, as we move forward.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to do the right thing for our citizens, and our citizens are electric customers. So, I think we already decided to move forward with the appraisal. Tonight's, this, this agenda item is just about the cost of it, and making sure we're ratifying the cost of it, and I think we already decided to move forward with the appraisal. So, if there's no further discussion, anybody else, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve agenda item 6.26.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Move to agenda item seven, city manager reports.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Agenda item eight, city attorney reports.
Only to add a little bit to Mr. Fueno's departure, so definitely appreciate the kind words. I agree that he's really been a phenomenal contributor. It's hard to lose good people, but when you lose them to great opportunities, it's hard to do that. So, I just want the council to know that filling his position is going to be a, and is, a very high priority for me right now. So, that's definitely gonna take up some time and attention, but you have my commitment to fill his position as quickly as we can, and figure out what's fiscally responsible as we do that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move to agenda item 9.1, annual evaluation of the performance and salary of the city manager. So, this is, as it says, is an annual thing, so we'll just go around and think first, you know, any comments we want to make about evaluation of performance of the city manager first, and then after we've had a chance to give comments we have on performance, then we'll, we'll talk about salary and compensation.
Can you repeat the same thing as I didn't hear?
Well, I think what we'll do is first, anybody wants to talk about performance evaluation first, and then after everybody's had a chance to say what they want to say, we'll talk about compensation.
Do you want me to start?
Well, I'll go first, just to say, look, I, I get that there's a lot of public interest in, in how we're working with both the city attorney and the city manager, but at the end of the day, they're employees, and so personally, I want to treat them with the same respect that they treat all of our employees that supervise them. And we would not have confidential candid conversations about their work performance, because I don't care what work role you're in, or what workplace you're in, I mean, there's always, any good candid conversation about performance always includes, you know, areas of opportunity to improve, and, and so, I really hesitate to get into weeds on that. I don't think it's fair of them. We certainly live in a world where anything that we could say is taken out of context, and often is, and certainly in this community, and so, I don't want to get into detail, other than I will just say that I judge, really both of their performances, but I judge the performance of the city manager on how well our city performs, and our 1,850 employees perform. That's not the entire job the city manager has, but it's a big part of it, and it's a big job. And managing our city operations and our budget, within the budget we set out here, it's, it's a big job, a big responsibility. And so, I judge the success and her performance by how well I see the city staff as a whole performing, the city performing. And I can tell you that I am very proud of the way our city performs, our city staff. We have great city employees, top to bottom. Do we have, you know, do we have hiccups from time to time, we have to address situations? Every city does. But I can tell you just overall, I am impressed with the way our city performs. And we, although I think we're already a leading city in the way we perform, we provide services to our community, you know, I think we, we all endeavor to go even higher, and to do even more, and appreciate the city manager's efforts to try to lead, lead, lead the entire team through innovation and finding better ways to do things for citizens. So, for me, you know, I'm not gonna get in the weeds on anything other than just say that, that I judge the city manager's performance by how well our city is performing, and I couldn't be more proud of the way our entire city staff performs, day in, day out, versus. So, that's for me to start, and you want to just start on your end?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, sir. So, for those of you who aren't aware, there is a form that we're able to fill out too. And I'll just keep people from having to pull a public record, read what I wrote here. So, I put, in regards to the city manager, Jennifer continues to perform her duties as city manager with professionalism, poise, and strong sense of responsibility to residents of our city. She is attentive to both day-to-day operations, needs, and long-term community goals, ensuring that major products, projects move forward efficiently while also responding to unforeseen challenges. Jennifer has built a capable and motivated team that reflects city values of stewardship, accountability, and service. She communicates clearly, delegates effectively, and demonstrates the inability to balance administrative demands with responsiveness to council, direction, and public concerns. Her collaborative approach fosters confidence in city operations and maintains trust among staff and community partners. So, good job. Thank you for this past year.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that we formalized this evaluation process. I know it can be uncomfortable, but I, I'm glad that we put those guidelines in and gave it some consistency. I too agree with you, this probably isn't the, the best place and use of our time to go through each and every item on these four pages, and have discussions with them. Truth is, I had, I had challenge finding any of these four pages and deducting points for anything. We are blessed as a city to have you as a leader. There's a quote, Martin Luther King Jr. says, "The ultimate measure of a human is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." Our city and our residents, and a lot of our Gulf Coast area, we had our challenges within the past year, and you were, you were tireless, you were the first in, the last one out. We were a beacon of hope for so many other cities on, on how the process should be handled and can be handled for the residents. And you and your, you and your staff did an amazing job, and I know you have, you would give the majority of the credit to your team, as you always do, and deservedly so, but somebody has to steer that ship, and I greatly appreciate you in that role. We followed that up, and you decreased our budget with this, and saved the taxpayers' money, recovering from not one storm but two, and then finding ways to save the taxpayers' money is important to this council, to the philosophy of us doing business for the people. You didn't hem, you didn't haul, you didn't complain, neither did staff, just got to work on it, and made it happen, and gave them a budget that I heard some people call as a unicorn budget. So, congratulations on that. That is a win for the citizens of Clearwater. So, I, I appreciate all the work you do and continue to do, I appreciate your attitude, your competitive spirit, the fight that you have in you for your teammates, because you do stand up for them quite often in our discussions, and remind me how important that is as well, and for the residents and for the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember [inaudible]?
Okay, I don't know, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna keep it fairly short, but I gotta tell you, I've been impressed with you ever since you came into the city as city manager. I mean, right away, you had the recycling debacle that you handled so well, and then it just went into there. You just took care of everything with professionalism, and, and this year, what you've done with transparency and communication is great. You've got the website revamped, you've got these dashboards on there for the public. I mean, you've, you're doing things we talked about years ago that never got done, so you have a lot of energy, and, you know, I've got a seven-page evaluation form, I'm not gonna, that's all I'm gonna leave it at. You did a good job. Thank you. And I'll give this to Rose, because it's gonna be public, you want to pass that down?
Vice Mayor. So, I also filled that form, and I will submit it for, for those who want to see it. I'm gonna, however, I do want to comment on a couple of things. We meet every week, just like everyone else, so this year-end evaluation to me is, is actually a formal process, but we always talk to you guys, you, every week, and so, that tight communication is, is important, and it just naturally presents itself as, as a way to keep us always aligned. So, this evaluation- So this evaluation should not come as a surprise. But the true caliber of a person shines the most brightly when under duress. And so I live in the same building as you, so I saw your leadership during those two storms. You were dealing with over, well, a little bit less than two thousand staff that were going through their own experience, and you navigated this city through two storms with all that noise of FEMA, what was applicable, what was not. And that's where you shine, is when you're challenged, because you stay steadfast. And so I think that's exemplary. And then I also want to formally congratulate you on receiving the prestigious ICMA credential.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, and I want to add to what Vice Mayor just said. Probably, we meet every week, both the City Manager and the City Attorney, and we do have those candid conversations about different job responsibilities and back and forth. So, you know, we evaluate all the time and get feedback and guidance, so it's certainly nothing that's ignored. I'm just particularly sensitive to someone who's, everything I write, everything, if you send me something, it's going to be public record, and somebody's going to immediately ask for it. They ask for my stuff every day, anything I put in writing, and I've just had an experience that so much of that gets taken out of context, so I'm careful to, and I think it's healthy for us to be able to have candid conversations with one another that aren't, I mean, that's just a back and forth that sometimes, particularly employer-employee, you need to be confidential. There's some things to really be truly candid with one another you don't want to put in writing. You wouldn't in the private sector either, so just to make sure we're doing that. But to remind the public, we have conversations every week with both the City Attorney and the City Manager, talking about performance. So with that, we'll move to the second part, and that's the salary of the City Manager. So the HR has given us information on current salary, and so just the discussion about compensation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the time that staff put in to getting all the information that we requested. I know there were several requests, because this is important. At the end of the day, I find it challenging to compare Clearwater to any city for that matter. We are our own unique and truly remarkable city, and we're blessed to call it home. We have a world-renowned beach, we have three beautiful entertainment venues, we have professional baseball, and tourism, and balancing being a destination city with the importance to all of us of livability. We have a coastline that's challenged and vulnerable with flooding, as so much of Florida is. We're seeing it on both sides, east and west coast of our borders. We're challenged with a downtown development that we all know about, and we work tirelessly for. You have two CRAs, a big police department, a big, I think we have, what, seven fire stations? And so Clearwater is its own beast. And there are some cities that are comparable and have bits and pieces of those characteristics in a basket, but there's very, very limited few that have all of them. We made a commitment, and council before us and leadership team made a commitment to put staff at a place of seventy-five percentile for municipal city staff, and to invest in our people. And I think that's important, and I think we've shown that track record from the previous council to this very council here, and I think we've done that in our police and fire negotiations. I think you consistently have done that with your staff, and deservedly so. When I start looking at some of your comparables, you're in that fifty-some percentile. So there is an opportunity here to recognize you for your work, I believe, as well as to compensate you for the responsibilities and roles and the hat, the many hats that you wear. I know when I had this discussion in our one-on-ones, thinking that you would fight for yourself and tell me I should be seventy-five percentile with the rest of our philosophy that we have for years, and your exact answer was no. I think I should be compensated exactly how my team is being compensated, and I think your team was compensated at a four percent raise across the board. So while I believe you deserve more, I commend you for that attitude and appreciation for your role in serving your team as well as the city and this legislative body, so I am supportive of the recommendation of four percent pay increase.
Yeah? Anybody else? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
So I share a lot of what you said, I share, you know, I view it the same way. The challenges that Clearwater faces cannot be represented by geography or population, it just can't. Having the number-one beach comes with great responsibility, and we've never felt it as much as we did last year. And so it's so hard when I look at all these comparators. If I remove all the strong mayor structures and all the county administrators, that doesn't leave much. And then when I drill down, honestly, maybe three, four cities are somewhat comparable, but still not. So it's really difficult to make that decision based on that. So what I factored was things that I feel should not be overlooked. One is, we did ask the staff and our City Manager to cut the budget, and so we need to be cognizant of that. We have given a four percent raise to the staff. We've only received a fraction of the eighty-seven million that we spent on hurricane relief. We don't know how much is going to be reimbursed. We don't know what's going on with the ad valorem, and ongoing with that. However, the exemplary leadership that she showed during not one but two crises needs to be acknowledged, and her recent credentials, and now she has more experience. So I like the four percent, because that's what she actually asked me as well.
With nothing like it was mine.
But I would go as far as five, because of how she got, how she led the city to get that beach up and running, which was recognized nation, like, by the state, when I went to Tallahassee, that's what I heard all the time, and it benefited our county. That's our county's cash cow, and that's a big responsibility. And so although you're happy with four, because you did so well, and it reaps many rewards all the way through the county with the way you managed the beach recovery, I would go up as high as five.
Councilman Albert?
I kind of feel the same way, you know, it's, you know, we're a team here, and, you know, the Florida cost of living increase through July two thousand twenty-five was three point three percent. I'm fine with going four percent, because the rest, what we did, the rest of the staff at four percent, and I think if we start giving more, it's going to be disadvantageous to the City Manager when dealing with department heads and so forth. But I am fine with the four percent, so I'll believe it at that.
Vice Mayor, pardon?
Well, then, just hearing everybody else, Jennifer, we've already talked about this in one-on-ones and those type of things. I'll just make a motion then for the City Manager to receive what the other employees are receiving, a four percent increase.
Second.
Okay, this public comment on this one, I'm sure.
If, certainly if a motion is made, then absolutely.
See, anyone here from the public side? Councilman Johnson, may I?
Effective when?
Whatever.
You can clarify what connect to the minimum wage that we agree.
Okay.
Because here's the incident. Right. But that's.
All right.
Yes. Usually I'm. First, it's because of the city. Public should probably have these. And therefore.
Good evening, council members. I'm still Bill Jones, and good evening. I'm raising a point of order. I don't believe that the provisions of Section 2.01 of the Clearwater City Charter is being followed. It reads in part, Paragraph C, Duties. It shall be the duty of the council, each October at a public meeting, present a report on the evaluation of the performance of the City Manager and City Attorney. This task should be easier this year, because last fall, this council adopted formal annual goals for both the City Manager and the City Attorney. You started on a path of extraordinary high performance. Some might raise a concern that these goals were adopted prior to the hurricanes last year and therefore would be superseded by that occurrence. I would highlight that the City Manager's goal, too, anticipated the development of a priority list in a strategic planning session, and those sessions were held in January and February. So appropriate modifications were probably made reflecting the hurricane experience. I'm not raising this question to criticize our wonderful City Manager, but to ensure that we memorialize the significant accomplishments of this last year, and to ensure that these procedures, as recommended by our last two charter review committees, citizen committees, are followed in future years. For your convenience, I have handed out copies of the charter section and the adopted goals. My experience is that these goals generally summarizes their, my experience with the rating process, is that the goals owner generally summarizes their accomplishments, and then the raters, you council members, in this case, would respond to those accomplishment reports. This would provide an opportunity for the council to discuss strengths and to collaboratively adjust guidance moving forward, not necessarily on performance, but guidance moving forward for the city. Also, for your convenience, I've highlighted some of the language in the City Manager's goals relating to an updated priority list. Generally, a priority list that some projects are assigned to higher priorities through a collaborative process determined by the council. It would be useful to have those rankings as part of the public record. Again, I'm reacting to a need for extraordinary high-level management and to, at the same time, managing city affordability. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been made aware to me that I'll have to amend my motion as well.
Okay. Well, first, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, particularly the City Manager and the City Attorney. Listening to each of you evaluate the performance of the City Manager was a rewarding experience. It is, for us residents, and us here at the meeting tonight, a spectator sport. We can observe and we can listen, but we do not participate in it. However, as one of you has already mentioned, you participate with the City Manager almost on a daily basis, discussions of a variety of issues and so forth. And I believe that your evaluation has been candid and honest, and it is the evaluation that will drive the performance salary adjustment. In my particular case, in business world as well, we always try to make sure that the salary driven by the evaluation rewarded and retained the employee. And I think you have accomplished that by your discussions and your proposal for the four percent increase. I applaud your action and your devotion to this task, and I applaud the performance of the City Manager. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else here from the public side want to speak to this agenda?
Yes, sir. I'm going to put her on the spot, but if I could hear the Human Resources Director Tiffany up here. In regards to my motion of increasing the City Manager's salary of four percent, I'm going to need an effective date, because the city's fiscal year starts October one.
It would be an effective date of September twentieth.
Okay, so we'll be back to you?
Yes.
Okay, so did you get that, Rosemary? Okay, thank you.
And I'll amend my second on that.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I concur with what's been said. Again, it's no reflection of the City Manager's performance. I think it's good for us, though, to recognize compensation similar. I'm not opposed to, to, every once in a while, looking at comparables from other cities. I personally have the philosophy we shouldn't do it every year, but I do want to keep compensation for this position in mind, what is out there, because we want to keep all our good employees. That said, I just don't think we should, personally, we should do it every year, and I think four percent is appropriate. And on the salary vote to you, and we're going to discuss the City Attorney, four percent's a pretty big number for both of you in dollars, so hopefully that'll, and I appreciate your humility and what you've shared with the others about wanting to do what the rest of the team out there, because we all know they've sacrificed greatly this past year too. Some of them worked phenomenal hours and did a great job, so I appreciate them too. So with that, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll be unanimous. Okay, we'll move to Item 9.2, first, the evaluation and performance of the City Attorney. Have a little bit of perspective, because I've been practicing law a long time, so I know how difficult his job is, and sometimes giving advice that clients don't want to hear, and navigating some very tricky, difficult issues that we've had this past year. But overall, your department, in all respects, in my opinion, performs very well, serves the citizens of Clearwater very well. And so it's not just about your own personal efforts, it's about your department and the city and the way they perform. And I can tell you and assure you from my legal perspective, we have an outstanding legal team, and you lead that, and I appreciate that. So with that, we'll go to other evaluations. Councilman McCotton?
Yes, sir, thank you. So again, so nobody has to pull a public record, and in accordance with my evaluation, I'm just going to read what I've already sent to David, too. David is a highly knowledgeable and successful, and has successfully navigated several complex legal matters on behalf of the city, especially since I've been here. He articulates these issues clearly and ensures council members are well-informed. His team consistently provides strong representation and sound legal counsel. David also demonstrates humility and sound judgment by recognizing when outside counsel may be better suited for specialized municipal issues. He keeps me well-appraised of the active litigation and other relevant legal developments within the city, maintaining transparency and communication throughout. His professionalism and expertise continue to serve the city very well, so thank you very much again for the past year, you've done a great job.
Councilman Manino?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'll do the same thing, I'll save you time and won't go through each and every individual item. I do greatly enjoy our brief time weekly that we get to sit together. I know we fly through so many topics, but I truly, I truly do enjoy it. You've led us, in your department, as a team, through a number of challenging issues that we face. I don't think we've ever rolled into an appointment and not had a challenging day and just had a, hey, let's just have a coffee and catch up, and that's not, that's never the case, nor do we expect it to. You lead with clarity, integrity, sound judgment. You're always calm, even under pressure, I enjoy that. There's no question about your integrity, your ethical approach to law, and your legal and technical expertise in municipal governments and state law. It's greatly appreciated. It gives me, I know, council confidence in knowing you have your hand in some of our contracts and negotiations, as well as development deals, that, to protect the city, to protect us, and to protect the citizens, and especially on some of our downtown developments that are coming our way, and finding ways to lockbox those, to stay in the good of the entire community, and that means a lot to the citizens of Clearwater and to myself, so I thank you for that. You're very responsive. I don't, never had an issue or haven't heard back from you when I needed to, maybe once or twice, but I think you had a toothed- or twice, but I think you had a tooth issue, and that's okay because you were in a dentist's chair eventually, and you got back to me, so we'll let you slide on that one. But I do enjoy you. I think Clearwater's fortunate to have you in the role you are in. You should be compensated fairly for it and recognized for the work that you do leading your department and our team. It makes sense to me that if, you know, we're staying consistent, 4% for our employees and investing in them, and doing the same with the city manager, I would fall on the same line and think that that's the least we could do for yourself and all the work you do for our city, so thank you, David.
Councilmember Albrethal?
Well, I've got my city attorney performance evaluation, which I will put into public record, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But just under the comments, the city attorney is constantly available to address my legal questions. We hold weekly one-on-one meetings to review ongoing city legal matters, and he remains accessible by phone whenever needed. He often works beyond his regular hours when circumstances require, and he seems to be very knowledgeable and, of course, certified in municipal law, which gives me confidence when things arise. So gave you a good performance evaluation, and I kind of agree with what's been said so far, so I'll give this to Rose when I leave here.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so so much has been said again, so I'm not going to repeat it, so I'll just add a couple of things. First, what I appreciate about our one-on-ones is that I feel it's a safe place for us to discuss each subject or each issue quite deeply, right? And I appreciate that you're able to articulate complex issues in a way that I can understand and then have an educated, make an educated decision. Like our city manager, you are available on the weekends. I know that it might not be fair to you, but I do most of my work on Sundays, and that's when I call you when there's something that I'm just not getting, so I appreciate that you're available on Sunday nights just to talk me through some things. And I always believe that you will fight for the city, and you'll play hard, you know what I mean? I always feel that way, so that's all I have to add to what already has been said.
Okay. All right, then compensation. Anyone want to go first on compensation?
I mean, I think we already kind of hit it again, so I'll just make a motion for the city attorney to receive what the other employees are receiving, a 4% increase to the retro date of September 20.
Second.
Okay. Anyone here from the public tonight desire to speak to this agenda?
Patrick Rafferty, once again. I won't repeat what I said previously about the city manager relative to the work that you did. I hope you do remember it. If you did not, that's my problem, not yours. I will add a couple of comments relative to the city attorney, however. Often, he is a man of many words, and that's not a bad thing. Quite frankly, I have found some of his discussions and information he's provided to us as residents relative to the construction taking place at Coatsman Park, the city hall construction, the hotel construction, the change to the contracts that were necessary, and in fact, the Duke Energy that we'll be going through next. The time he takes to simplify and explain to us the details of what's going on, help yourselves as council members, but more importantly, the residents of Clearwater fully understand why this action is being taken, has been a tremendous asset for us to enjoy. And I do thank him for that, and I think your evaluation, this drove the salary adjustment, is appropriate, and I thank him for his service to the city of Clearwater. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
If you don't know it, I'm still Bill Johnson. I thank you for the opportunity of going through the appraisal process for your city's direct reports. I'm happy to participate in Clearwater 101, the academy, right now, and I'm seeing the depth of quality of the people that work for the city. And I just want to urge you to continue to improve. This city can be that bright, shining city on the hill, and the city manager is going to, and the mayor is going to, all these highfalutin, high-performance seminar sessions, and I think we can be better. And again, everybody's interested in the expenses and affordability, and so it's a challenge, but I think you can be up to it, but you have to really facilitate and use the best technology for management as well as the G Whiz stuff that's on your phone and computers. So I urge you to all collaborate, and I think collaboration is really important for the council to clarify priorities and where to focus, so thank you. And you do a great job, too.
Thank you, and I'm going to address some of the things, the highfalutin things that you just mentioned in the next agenda, and so I appreciate you sharing what you, both of you, Patrick and Bill, both what you shared. So with that, on this particular agenda, any further discussion? And if not, we're ready to vote. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, we will move to item 9.3, approve the city manager 2026 goals. And so with that, I will just start by saying, I appreciate in particular how much the city manager has embraced our participation in the Harvard Bloomberg Institute Leadership Program. If you look at goal number three, it's, we chose through that project and that participation, assistant city manager Swager with city manager, it's a separate time from me, but we chose as a team to choose innovation as our track, that we got connected with other cities, also looking at innovation, and then a follow-up, we agreed to engage with a group that they sent consultants here last, it was last week, wasn't it? They had two consultants here last week to lead us through, how many weeks is it altogether? It's 10 months? No, a 10-month?
It's 10 months, yeah.
10-month project. And so out of that, the city manager, she had, she put it out to our entire team to see who was interested in serving on this task force of our employees. She got an overwhelming response, and she had to pick, and I can tell you, I went in there for the opening part of it, and incredibly impressive group of primarily young people. I don't know anybody who's my age, but I mean, we had a few closer to my age, but a lot of young people, and I can't tell you, Mr. Johnson, just how impressed I was, not just with the group that was put together, but I really appreciate how the city manager has embraced that, and that's reflected in this goal number three, as you see there. So we are doing all those things in a different way than maybe, you know, you've sat up here with us, so you know how it feels, and I can tell you right now, I mean, just incredible scrutiny on all of us, but particularly me, on anything we write or say or do whatever. It's really hard to lead and lead a team through innovation, through creative ideas in that way, but I can tell you what's going on and the way the city manager has embraced this endeavor. These are some of the, this leadership institute that Michael Bloomberg, former mayor of New York City, founded, he puts incredible, still puts an incredible amount of money into it. Most of it's cost-free for us. We just have to participate, and we're getting some high-level talent, high-level leadership facilitators, but more importantly, it's inspiring some of the youngest, brightest minds in our team to come up with ideas on how we can serve our citizens better. So that part of this goal, and all that others weigh in, for me, that goal number three is, city manager is one that I'm really excited about, and I thank you for embracing it the way you have.
Yeah, probably. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Albrethal?
Yeah, her three goals that I was given, I'm just going to read them. Goal number one is work with stakeholders to create and implement economic opportunities for Clearwater, and she's done a great job of doing that. Goal number two, implementation of the strategic plan, and, you know, since developing the street, she's very helpful in developing, helping us develop the strategic plan, and then basing her decisions on everything on the strategic plan, which is what we've been talking about for a long time, happening, and it's happening now, and it's really working. Everything down to the budget, everything has a category when deciding how to spend money. And then also, as the mayor was saying, goal three, provide direction and leadership focused on transparency and accountability with a focus on communications and becoming a premier employer and community. And I've seen her, in this particular goal, what I've seen is what she's done with the website and the dashboards and getting so much more transparency to the public where before, we really didn't have that. But anybody can go online and get on these dashboards and see what's going on all the time and decisions almost in real time. So that was very impressive to me. So that's all I want to say about that.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I agree with these three goals, very much so. In my mind, goal number one is very instrumental for the health and future of our city, and having this goal as a priority, I believe, changed the culture of our city government to having more of a sort of role in our environment and our success. So I'm loving goal number one. I know that it did not exist five, six years ago, so thank you for that. Of course, implementation of strategic plan keeps us focused and on track, and I think that's why we have accomplished so much. And then, goal number three, what's particularly resonated with me was the Executive Leadership Academy. I like the idea of supporting and investing in our own talent and retaining our staff. I think it helps morale and the culture of city government, and it's the right place to invest in us, our staff. So those are the three things that stick out in my mind.
Councilwoman Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, think all three are greatly important, and I'm glad you put them on there. The first one talks about the economic opportunities, especially the 16.2 acres of county properties downtown. This is a generational opportunity, and I think we all recognize that, and this doesn't happen really to any city in the state of Florida, and we have it on our horizon, and we are blessed. We're also blessed to know that you are a voice at the table fighting for us in Clearwater because they're not our properties, they are the counties, and we aren't at the table in all those discussions, but we know that you are eager and energetic enough to kick their doors down, to make sure that not only we are part of those conversations, but we're sitting at the table with them so that our voices, our concerns, and our interests are heard. And up to this point, I felt that, so I thank you for that. Number two, obviously very important, our strategic plan, you know, guides the city in the direction we go in the budgeting process, is very enjoyable, keeping us on task, and it's vitally important to the health and the future of our city, so that's definitely worth talking about. Goal three is equally important. I know we all had an opportunity as council to attend a couple of those Bloomberg classes. I, too, Mayor, was, I was not amazed, but it was just refreshing. It gave me so much confidence when I walked in that room and saw your team and just listened to the high level of conversations that were broken up in the room and then coming together. My only comment at the time was, you know, if governments could communicate this effectively and work together with this much talent that's in the room, there's no doubt that we have that opportunity that the gentleman just spoke about, about being that golden city on the hill, and that was impressive. So kudos to you and your team, and thank you for allowing me to have a small piece of that. So I wish you nothing but the best moving forward, and I look forward to hearing all the successes we have through that program. And Mayor, I appreciate you really leaning in on that program, too, not just for the city and for staff, but for the citizens of Clearwater, because I think it will pay dividends, without a doubt.
I mean, everybody's already said it, so, you know, we're going to get it done. Look forward to the upcoming year.
Okay. Okay. So we need a motion to approve that, and then I'll...
So moved.
Second.
Anyone here from the public tonight desires to comment on this agenda? Hearing seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mayor, may I say something just real quick? Because there's been a lot said, and I want to just give a real quick comment on the last two items. One, I want to thank the council for their support. It's true, the credit goes to the team. Yes, I am blessed to have the position to lead the team. You know, when the position presented itself a couple of years ago now, and the council and the community and the team saw something in me, I don't know that I recognized in myself that they, you know, this was the path that felt like it was chosen for me and taking advantage of that, but if it was not for that continued support from the community, from the team, and from the council, I wouldn't be here, and these successes would not be possible. And so I just really want to reiterate, it's the team that does that. I have an incredible city manager's team right now, and our future is incredibly bright. Our goals are reflective of what the council, what we hear, the council, we listen, we listen to the council, we also listen to the public. We're working really hard on the transparency and the accountability portion of it. The strategic plan and the communication of how we're doing on that is now a public-facing dashboard, so you can see the percentage of completed projects. So all of that is there to hold us accountable and to keep us motivated. So I just, I wanted to make sure we pointed that out, that, you know, whereas I know there might not be as much discussion as some might want on that, it's there. We talk about it all the time, our team talks about it all the time, and we're updating, we have a lot of conversations of how often to update that, it's being updated again. So please know that you can check on us and see how we're doing with those list of projects as it relates to the strategic plan. And then lastly, I just, I want to say, you know, thank you again. This community as a whole really has made me want to be the better version of myself, and I will continue to do that, thanks to all those people out there who motivate me. So thank you.
Okay. So now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, I guess, I probably should have let the city manager say that upfront, so we'll move to the 9.4, and I'll do what I should have done with her. City attorney, do you, would you like to share with us anything about the goals that you...
Only to make an observation I know that has been previously made, which is the challenge of creating goals in my role as the city attorney. So, you know, I know it's something that Councilmember Albrethal and I have talked a lot about over the years. I'm fully supportive of this in the sense that, like the manager, I'm someone who believes in a lot of public transparency. As Councilmember Menino said, you know, ethics are also very important to me, so my heart is with this, but unfortunately, the nature of my job makes this hard because the nature of what I do is reactive. That's not to say that it has to be 100% reactive, but the vast majority of time, your city attorney, whoever it is, me or, you know, somebody else, is responding to things that happen. Either there is legislation that comes out, and we're responding to that. There's a lawsuit that comes in, we're responding to that. There's a need to negotiate a deal with a developer, I'm responding to that. There's something the council has a priority, and we want to work on land development deals, things of that nature, the fillies. I mean, there's something I'm reacting to on the outside, and so that makes it challenging to plan ahead. Where we can, I have tried to innovate with... Where we can, I have tried to innovate within the office, but I'll be honest and say that I don't feel like it's enough for me to either take credit for it or even call it goals. For example, as the mayor will appreciate, being a lawyer, there are an increasing number of AI tools that are available in the legal space. So we are currently experimenting with Westlaw's AI tools. That's something that could give us some efficiencies in the future, but I'm reluctant to make that a goal, because, for example, what if we find that the AI tools are not as sophisticated as we would like them to be, or not as reliable? I would not want to make a goal to adopt something that in fact is actually harmful to the city or in fact may not be beneficial. The same thing for a lot of the other things we work on. So I know tonight, for example, we talked about NuGen Duke. At some point, I'm going to be sitting down with Duke Energy to talk about this, whether that's going to be negotiating a franchise, whether that's negotiating a purchase. At some point, we're going to be sitting down at a bargaining table. But I would not want to make that a goal, because we don't know where this is going to go. I have no idea what the appraisal is going to be. I don't know what council's direction is going to be. So it would not be fair, I think, to anybody to try to make a goal for something that we don't know where it's actually going to go in the months ahead. So what I have done to try to work within this framework is to put those things that I truly feel comfortable saying are going to be goals. In other words, those things that I know with certainty that we're going to have to work on, those things that I know are going to take up real time, where I could honestly say with a straight face that this is something I would deserve credit for if we get it done, and yet, without waiving any attorney-client privilege, which I definitely would not want to do, especially for our active litigation. So to that end, I put two goals here. The first one is our closing with Gotham on the old city hall parcel. As the council is aware, we have revised our deal with Gotham such that they are hopefully on track to close for the old city hall parcel by March 1st. I have been all over that. The manager has also been heavily involved in that. And so we have been meeting with Gotham regularly. I know that ACM Slaughter and his team have also been coordinating with the construction side of this. But that's something that is well-known. We're under contract. It's something for which legal has primary responsibility to ensure successful closing, and it's obviously a high priority item for the city. So I felt comfortable putting that as a goal. It's also something we can measure, because either we're going to close successfully or we won't. And if we don't, it better not be my fault. And so that's, I will make sure that we either close successfully by March 1st, or if we have not closed by March 1st, it will not be my fault. So the second part of this, and the second part of the goals, are the litigation matters. And as the council knows, we get together every week. I know the council is very familiar with, and as is the manager, those cases that are really taking my attention right now, those cases that are requiring focus. It's not always necessarily tied to things that are high-profile. The public probably assumes that, but it's not always the case. But obviously, we're not going to discuss that in public, because I wouldn't want to waive attorney-client privilege. But I feel confident that all of you know what it is that I'm working on there, and you will be able to assess, as my bosses, at the end of the year, how well did we do in working on those matters? With that said, happy to answer any questions, as well as happy to take feedback.
Okay. Certainly, you know, we're all excited about the progress on the bluff. Definitely Gotham property and definitely hotel, which 20th, we're talking a number of days, but hopefully we go in over there, too. So appreciate all your work on that. And it's very important in the future of Clearwater, for sure. Okay, any other comments in those? If not, is there a motion?
Just real quick, before we get into that, maybe we should, because of the uniqueness of the city attorney's position and the lack of being able to attain smart goals, entertain during the next work session talking about amending Rule 17, to kind of take that out of the loop because of literally everything he's just explained.
Making it more applicable?
Right.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
And I'll make a motion to 9.4.
Second.
Any moving second, is anybody here from the public that desires to speak to this agenda? Hearing seen none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Move to the agenda item 10, closing comments by councilmembers.
I have nothing at this time, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Menino?
No, just real quick, I think it's probably worth noting and sharing in the hope that we feel as council and as a leadership team on the direction that the city's being led and that we're going. I think our residents should have peace of mind that you're being responsible fiscally with the limited resources that municipalities have, especially in these uncertain and challenging times that the message is coming down from Tallahassee, not knowing what direction that's going. But I know we're in good hands, and we'll make the best decisions and have full confidence in that going forward. I know we're hope-filled on some of the projects that are going in our downtown district soon, and projects that we as a city control in our own hands, hopefully, which is important. And we just heard two of them, the bluffs in the old city hall project, the Hilton Hotel, which I think the mayor just said is breaking ground on the 20th, which is a big addition down there, and then the 16.2 acres of county properties, all of which are at the direction of the city and the citizens of Clearwater. So I'm extremely hope-filled in the direction we're going and thank our entire team and this council.
Councilmember Albrethal?
Yes. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Clearwater Ferry Service to Dunedin has resumed, starting again on October 9th, after being suspended due to damage from the 2024 hurricanes. Surface operates Thursday through Sunday and temporary landing construction in the Dunedin Marina through a partnership with the city of Clearwater. And unfortunately, I was out of town last week when they had the ribbon cutting for this, but I know that we had some council members attend. And, yeah, Mr. Menino? And thank you for that. And I understand we had four or five ex-mayors from the city of Dunedin, and it was a good crowd. And they did say that the first ferry service was completely full. So I know Dunedin's been talking about this for a while. They're excited to have it back. And if you want to get from Dunedin to Clearwater along the, on the water, give a call to the ferry service.
Vice Mayor?
Picking up on that, Mayor Mo from Dunedin actually is the chair of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. And she used that platform to formally thank us for being good neighbors. So I appreciate it to have the whole region hear from her about that. So also, you know, it's so easy at times to be bogged down by all the negativity, especially with social media. It's just a lot of things going at you. But last night was truly a special night. I attended the T-Pain concert. And it was such a wonderful, wonderful night. I mean, he showcased 20 years of music and then went from there to Black Sabbath. Very diverse, over 8,700 people there. It was a great evening. And last night reminded me that things can happen. Things are possible. There are great things happening. And we shouldn't, you know, be bogged down by the negativity, because, you know, we accomplished a lot, and last night really proved it to me. The idea of having 8,700 diverse people in downtown was not something I could imagine eight years ago. It simply wasn't there. It was tumbleweed across the street. And so last night reminded me to count my blessings, and Clearwater has many.
Okay, move to item 11, closing comments by mayor. I had like an hour to talk, but, you know, just kidding.
If you could do it for 21 minutes, I may win the...
I wanted to share, I want to share something that not, I don't think enough people in our community know about, but at Peace Memorial Church over here, they have a monthly concert series where, it was a big band concert on the second Sunday afternoons of every month. And they have, it varies. It was big band this past Sunday, but it's classical. It's really fantastic. And that church is so historic, just a beautiful architecture. So it's a great setting for it. But I gave some opening remarks to the season that's coming up, and it continues on through March or April. It's a fantastic program. But I told them, you know, they've been doing that for 20 years about. Live music in downtown Clearwater has really taken off. And I told them Sunday, I said, you know, just a week and a half before, I was in The Sound, Alison Krauss and Union Station. Alison Krauss has won 27 Grammys. She's fifth all-time of all performers winning Grammy Awards, just down the street from Peace Memorial where they're having this. And then we had Tadashi Trucks Band in the other night, that night, Sunday night when I was there. And Derek Trucks has been ranked as one of the top 20 guitarists of all time in the entire world. And some of those folks play with the Allman Brothers Band, but they've won Grammys, too. And then at the Capitol Theater, we've got Macy Gray coming up, who won a Grammy. So at the Capitol Theater. It's just, and then this coming week, we've got Clearwater Jazz Holiday, starts tomorrow night. So four days of other performers. I'm sure some of them have won Grammys or been nominated for Grammys. But it's just amazing with all our different venues, the kind of talent we're attracting. Small venues like Peace Memorial, but the bigger venues, we're really becoming a nationwide destination for all kinds of music, downtown Clearwater, just the venues we have and the kind of performers we're bringing in at all different types of venues. So I couldn't have been more excited to share that with them. And they have a great turnout. I encourage the public to go visit that some Sunday afternoon. It's a great, it's free. They take a donation from those who want to give, but it's a free concert for those. And I encourage the community to participate. The other thing I want to mention is fall festivals. We've got several of our rec centers coming up. But I went to the one at Countryside Rec a week or so ago. It was fantastic. The way they engage the community, indoors and outdoor, I mean, just really phenomenal what our team does out there. And they're not the only ones. I know we have one at the Long Center. We have some other ones coming up that are really great. But encourage the community to go out and enjoy some of these fall festivals that are taking place, because it's really a great, unique benefit we have to living in the city of Clearwater. So I'll cut out the rest of my hour presentation. With that, if there's no further business to come for the city council, we will adjourn the meeting of October 15.